Yes, we had already begun our meeting and had an executive session, so we've already done the pledge and opened the meeting, so we're going to go right into the approval of the minutes. And do I have a motion?
I move we approve the minutes.
A second.
First by Angel, second by Louis. Okay, any questions, comments? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Louis?
Yes.
And next we have the approval of the financial report. And do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the financial report dated February 28th, 2021.
A second. So first by Toadvine, second by Angel. And Mrs. Hageman?
I mean unless anybody has any questions, I'll just ask for your approval on the report as submitted.
Are we pretty much on track receiving our revenue from the property taxes that are coming in?
We're a little behind, but you know, it's all a timing issue with everybody being out of the office and working from home. Things have slowed down a little bit, meaning from Montgomery County Auditor's Office, not us. But I get it, I understand, and we've had some delays and extensions on deadline dates for tax collections. So we are a little behind, but I'm hopeful that by the end of the year, we'll have it all. We've just got to keep a really close eye on our cash flow because we are operating in the red each month until all those tax dollars come in.
Will you explain what it means when we're operating in the red? Because we do have money.
We do. Well, just like with your household budget, it's always a good idea to have some money in reserves or in your savings account because your cash is not always going to meet your expenses for the month. So out of, you know, the last, where are we? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight months, we've only had two months where we've had more cash than we've had expenses. So six out of the eight months, you are operating in the red, meaning you're spending more cash than you have and you're dipping into your savings account. So when we get to the end of the year, that's when we see where we, you know, end up. Have we, you know, managed our cost enough to stay within the revenues that we have for that month, for that year? Or have we, you know, dipped into our savings too much and, you know, come out with some deficit spending? So we've had a lot of unexpected revenue sources. Some are only one-time only payments, and so we're going to have to look at how we move forward from here. But right now, with the last five-year forecast that the board approved, we're operating with a $3.2 million deficit spending for this year. But we've had some expenses that are less than we anticipated, and we've had some one-time only payments, so I'm looking at that. Treasurers really don't like this much change, but if it's good change, then we'll certainly give it our best shot, so.
Okay, well, I'm sure community members have heard the federal government is pushing a lot of money into the district. Is that going to be able to be spent however we want it to? Or are there strings attached?
Well, they're federal dollars, and so they're federal grants, and as federal grants, they always have strings attached to them. Now, these grants have less strings or not as stringent, but it has to be related to COVID or some kind of pandemic recovery or learning recovery. There are some strings. Now, they do allow us to supplant, which means you can pick up current costs using these monies to keep people employed, because that's certainly an effort that the federal government and state government wants, as well as Miami'sburg City School wants to do, keeping people employed and not having to make cuts and do refs. Lots of districts have already done refs, so we're looking at what we can do with those monies to maximize, you know, strategically, use it in a way that we can maximize, you know, keeping as many people employed as long as possible.
Anyone else? All right.
Not right now.
Roll call.
Mr. Louis?
Yep.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes. All right, next we have the recognition of citizens, staff, and students. And we have Karen, is it, how do you pronounce your last name?
Saddle.
Saddle. She has come to speak, and as usual, it's the three-minute time limit? Okay.
It won't take me that long.
Thank you, yeah.
It won't take me that long.
Okay.
First of all, I want to tell everyone, thank you.
And I need to have your address.
I'm sorry. Good?
Can you give us your address?
12, I thought, 1214 Lord Fitzwalter.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Uh huh. Thank you guys for your time this evening. Some of you were here last year when I addressed this same issue, and pardon?
That's out in the hallway.
And very shortly after that meeting, our lives changed forever. COVID hit, and we've never been the same. Last year, I was told we thought about the position, and I left it at that, and I didn't initiate anything else until now, because it just wasn't appropriate. So where we stand now is, last year, it was 20 years since the substitute teacher pay was increased. Now it's 21. Many districts, most districts, our neighboring districts, even as far away as Hubert Heights, compensate their substitutes significantly more. Springboro just increased theirs. West Carrollton pays $115. Vandelia's $115. The national average is $125. Miami'sburg is $85 a day before taxes, which works out to be about $11.33 an hour. I don't know if there's any other positions in the district that are compensated at rate. Not that substitute teachers aren't equal to monitors and aides, but all said and done, if you get a young kid coming out of school, they're going to go to another district if they need to make money. Some of us do it because we've been doing it for a lot of years, and it's comfortable, we know the people, and we do it for the kids. So I would like for you guys to possibly think about, do whatever after hearing that. I don't know where things did, but $85 a day, $11 an hour is pretty, not very supportive of what you expect a substitute teacher to do in the classroom. Now, if you don't, if teachers don't care, if they just want a monitor or a babysitter, that's fine, but I think that my teacher friends don't want that. They want somebody who's going to do what they ask them to do for the kids, and it's all for the kids. So thank you for your time.
Well, thanks for your patience during COVID, you know, with understanding that, you know, those kinds of decisions were hard to take on during COVID, and thanks for subbing in our district. We truly appreciate you, and we are looking at increasing subpay, and we hope to have some answers soon. So thank you for coming. And then next, we have our Student of the Month, Elijah Weinberg from Mound Elementary School. Will you come on up, Elijah? Mr. Amsler, the board member right behind you is going to read all the cool things about you.
All right. Miami'sburg City School District, February Student of the Month is Mound Elementary School, third grade student Elijah Weinberg. He was nominated by his teachers Carrie Brown and Megan Ferguson. They said, "We would like to nominate Elijah Weinberg for the district's Student of the Month. Elijah exemplifies the Mound Elementary positive behavior goals in all aspects of his day. He is respectful to all the individuals that comes in contact with, during the school day. All the students in the classroom, as well as all the adults in the building, would agree that they can count on Elijah to be kind, caring, and helpful. Elijah demonstrates his responsibility on a daily basis. He sets high expectations for himself both at school and at home." Mr. Weinberg, is that true? "In the classroom, he is always prepared for the day and ensures he is actively engaged. Elijah is ready to learn in all subjects. He puts forth his best effort on every assignment. If he is unsure of something, he will reach out for extra assistance. At the beginning of the school year, he set a goal for himself in mathematics on a program called Extra Math. He has surpassed these goals by mastering his addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division facts. Outside of school, Elijah plays club soccer through Metro FC and wrestles at Prodigy Wrestling Academy." I wouldn't have figured that you wrestled.
Imagine that, huh?
"He competed on the ODP training team for soccer and has been a youth wrestling state qualifier for the past two years. His interests include math, constructing, organizing, and problem solving. One of his favorite activities is recycling. His mother mentioned that he will walk or bike with his dad around the neighborhood collecting cans. If you spent the day with Elijah, you would see a child who truly loves learning and is excited about his education. He is a model gopher here at Mound Elementary. Miami'sburg City Schools are lucky to have a student like Elijah Weinberg in the district." Mr. Elijah Weinberg, congratulations. Being awarded Student of the Month.
We have a guardian to present to you from the Board of Education. Elijah, did you bring in a special guest for the student? Who did you bring? Okay, and what's your sister's name? Mia, and what grade is she in? Okay, so what do you do, what do you like to do? Do you drive or cruise? You don't know? Well, we'll give you some tips on your health. Well, and mom and dad, did you drive or did they drive? They drove, okay, so maybe next time, if you look for that, you know it'll be time before you know it. Right? So soccer your favorite or wrestling? This is pretty cool. So, let's do it. Get a picture of you guys. We'll get a picture of you, Mrs. Hubert, your mom and dad, sister, okay?
He's old, he doesn't remember things.
Other building Student of the Month representatives include, from Bauer Elementary School, Rahik Amman-Foley; Bear Elementary School, Lee Bailey; Jane Chance Elementary School, Elena Bering; Kinder Elementary School, Sam Warman; Mark Twain Elementary School, Gloria Holbrook; Medlarview Elementary School, Brooklyn Kemp; Miami'sburg Middle School, Antonio Aiello; and Miami'sburg High School, Andrew Markworth. So congratulations to all the Students of the Month and this year's, or not this year's, this month recipient of February Student of the Month, Mr. Weinberg. So congratulations to all those students.
All right. Next, we're going to go on to our Ohio School Board Association Business Awards, and the two groups that were selected this time, we really wouldn't technically call them businesses, but they did fall underneath the guidelines and they have contributed so much to our schools. So we were awarded, these are nominations that we put in, and then OSBA decides, you know, if they're going to award you that honor, and of course, they did. And the resolution is, whereas public schools and local businesses are an integral part of this community, and whereas many local businesses play a crucial role in supporting our schools, and whereas the economic health of our community, state, and nation depends on a strong public school system, and whereas collaboration between local public schools and local businesses strengthens schools and the business community alike by providing a well-trained and highly educated workforce, and whereas an excellent public school system is vital to the quality of life in this community and fundamental to preserving a strong democratic society now and the future. Therefore, be it resolved that the Miami'sburg City District Board of Education names the following businesses to the 2020 OSBA Business Honor Rule, showing appreciation for the firm's ongoing support of the community's public schools. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for every child who attends them. And I just wanted to say, too, that many businesses and individuals supported these golf outings, and our first nominee and award winner is the Miami'sburg High School Alumni Association. And representing them, we have Samantha Mittman-Palmer and Angie Berger. And Dr. Blessing will present the awards to you.
Congratulations. On behalf of the school board and myself, we have a certificate for your organization and then just the nomination, the letters in there as well, recognition.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention some of the things that were purchased with the funds. 295 library books for all of our buildings, $550 for picnic tables at Bear School, $500 for the Cool Critters materials at Maddox Lane, $4,000 for Destination Imagination, $1,000 towards our teacher mini-grants, and $1,000 towards the MHS Theater. We appreciate it so much, and thanks so much for coming tonight.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
And then our next award goes to the Miami'sburg Football Alumni Association, and Doug Brown is here to accept that award.
And then a congratulations letter as well. On behalf of the board, we appreciate that.
And then, and I wanted to just kind of say what the funds, how the funds were used, and they were basically, according to Doug, were used to support the Miami'sburg varsity football program, equipment, sports medicines, and other needs. So thank you so much.
Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Hey, thanks for coming. And then next, we have National School Library Month. It is recommended that the Board of Education recognize April as National School Library Month. The 2021 theme is Welcome to Your Library. First sponsored in 1958, National Library Month is a national observance sponsored by the American Library Association and libraries across the country each April. It is time to celebrate the contributions of our nation's libraries and librarians and to promote library use and support. It is recommended that the Board of Education express its appreciation for our school media specialists and media paraprofessionals who teach the skills of locating and using information through traditional resources and new technologies, provide literature appreciation activities, support classroom literacy instruction, and guide and encourage content and recreational reading to every student. So yes, we definitely want to recognize our staff that work in the media center that sometimes, well, I see this often when I go into schools, some of the kids are really drawn to our media specialists and have a really close connection to them and get very interested in reading because of those people. And then next, we have the recognition of appreciation for retirees. So do I have a motion for that, for this?
I move that we adopt a resolution of appreciation for the following employee, Pearl Drake, on her retirement.
Second.
Okay, first by Angel, second by Amsler. It is recommended that the Board of Education adopt a resolution of appreciation for the following employee, and it's Pearl Drake. She served as a school psychologist in our district for, I believe, 15 years, and she did, was presented with her award yesterday. So, thank you, Pearl. All right, anybody else? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Louis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have a board discussion with curriculum updates and the extended learning plan by Stacy Moore, and then we will have inter-district transfer discussion by Katie Lucas.
All right, we will start with graduation requirements, and then I'll go into the extended learning plan. So curriculum update, actually just in time, because some new information was released today. I gave each of you a packet. All the information that I gave you can be found on our website. There is a new graduation requirement webpage out there. So just to review what is required for graduation, first, students have to meet their credit requirements, obviously. The state does set the credit requirements at a minimum of 20. School districts are allowed to increase that requirement, so we have a requirement of 22 credits. The difference is actually two electives. And with those two electives, one thing we have added is the requirement that all students have a half-credit in computers. We recommend that they take our computer applications class if they come in as freshmen or sophomores, but obviously, we would accept any computer class. We also require a half-credit of Family and Consumer Science, and we added this year that it is recommended that all freshmen take our Viking Prep class, and that was a Family and Consumer Science class that was revamped this year to start career awareness and intro to Family and Consumer Science and finances and manners and social emotional health and all that. So that is the first step. Students have to meet credit requirements. That's the easy part. Then you get into the confusing part, so. If you look at the screen, it kind of gives you a real quick summary of the graduation requirements. So right now, our current seniors and our current juniors actually have two pathways they could take. When our current seniors and juniors entered ninth grade, there were three pathways for graduation that they could meet. They could earn 18 points on Ohio State Test, so every junior and senior takes seven end-of-course exams related to their courses, ELA1, ELA2, Algebra, Geometry, Biology, American History and American Government. Each one of those tests is worth five points, so students need to earn a minimum of 18 points on those tests. They do need to have a minimum of four points in ELA, a minimum of four points in math, and then a minimum of six points in Science and Social Studies combined. If students didn't meet those 18 points, they could also earn an industry credential. That option is really geared mostly towards our CTC kids, but we are working on increasing that. And then students could also earn a remediation-free ACT SAT score. I'll keep my comment to myself, because if you don't, no, I won't, because I never do. If you don't earn 18 points on end-of-course exams, I don't know how you're going to earn a remediation-free score on the ACT, but somebody could surprise us. So those were the graduation requirements when they entered ninth grade, and those are still with them, just our current juniors and seniors. The state put in then permanent requirements that apply to the classes of 2023 and beyond. That also applies to classes of 21 and 22. So if our current juniors and seniors didn't meet the 18 points or remediation-free on ACT, they could also fall under the permanent requirements. Our current sophomores, and then after that, they have to meet the permanent requirements. And so those permanent requirements, we changed to competency as the first step, and that competency score is a 684 on the ELA2 exam and the Algebra 1 exam. Our current sophomores, and then every class after that, they do not take the ELA1 test anymore. They only have six tests instead of seven. So first step is to earn that competency score. Again, if a kid would not, there are alternatives, and the alternatives would be to develop career readiness through foundational options or supporting options, and I think that's C on your guys' paper. That means scoring on a web exam, a pre-apprenticeship program, an industry credential, work-based learning experiences, Ohio Mean Jobs readiness, seals, and work keys. Those are options as well. Students could enlist in the military and show their contract with the military, and that would prove competency as well. Or they can earn college credit plus credit to replace whichever competency score they didn't meet. So if they didn't meet the 684 in Algebra, they could take college Algebra at CCP if they qualified, and that would replace that. That is step one for the permanent requirements. Then we get into, they have to demonstrate readiness. And to demonstrate readiness, all students have to earn two diploma seals. There are nine Ohio diploma seals, and there are three local diploma seals, and that you have in your packet with the seal and the requirements, what it takes to earn a seal. So all students have to earn at least one Ohio seal, but they could earn two Ohio seals or one local seal. So when you look at the types of seals that are there, when you go back and think about the original graduation requirements of our juniors and our seniors, most of those requirements are blended into these seals. So for example, your 18 points on Ohio State Test, the competency on the ELA2 and Algebra take care of those. But our students also then take a biology end-of-course exam. Students can earn the science seal if they score proficient on the biology exam. They can earn the citizenship seal if they score proficient on the American History and the American Government exam. The college-ready seal, that is earned if they get a remediation-free score on the ACT and SAT. So all those old requirements are built in, they're just reorganized. We do have three local seals, the community service seal, the fine and performing arts seal, and the student engagement seal. Those requirements, we were allowed to set ourselves. Mr. Black and myself went to a workshop with surrounding districts and worked on requirements and tried to keep things consistent around this area, and then we brought it back to our counselors in the building. So these are our local seals, community service seal, they have to have 60 hours of community service, fine and performing arts, three fine arts, or two credits in fine arts and at least one performance. Student engagement seal is meaningful participation in an extracurricular. We worked with surrounding districts and kept them very similar, and then we also talked if a student earns a seal in another district and the requirement, they move to your district and the requirements are slightly and the requirement, they move to your district and the requirements are slightly different, we're going to accept every district's seal, whether it was different than ours or not. So really just trying to keep it straight of our current juniors and seniors right now with the two options, really more than two, but. And then class of twenty-three and beyond. So hot off the press today, House Bill sixty-seven was passed, Sharon, I'm going to steal your thunder here.
Go ahead.
House Bill sixty-seven was, was passed by the Senate and the House and has gone to the governor to sign. It doesn't change the graduation requirements, but it does add a little flexibility. So our current juniors and seniors, if they haven't met the eighteen points on the end-of-course exams, we can use their course grade that was related to that exam to replace those points. And that was the same thing from last year as well. The problem, last year it was all students, now it's only juniors and seniors. So that does help us look at, we have about ten to twelve kids that hadn't met graduation requirements in this manner, so we can go back and look at their grades. It also then allows a school district to review a student if they haven't met maybe some of these requirements or credit requirement. We can, we have the liberty to say that we do believe this student met the requirements and issue them a diploma anyway. We can also then give a student a diploma with the curriculum requirements and an Ohio Means Jobs readiness seal. So we've got to go back and review kind of our kids that have not met requirements yet and see how this helps them. There is one thing in here that the bill does, and it allows us to not administer the American history end-of-course exam this year. However, since the course grades are not replacing the sophomore's scores and the American history exam is tied to a seal, we will still administer the American history exam because that's still helping a kid meet a graduation requirement. So I don't know what they thought that would do. It does have the emergency clause in, so as soon as Governor Dewine signs it, it's in effect. That was a lot of questions.
Stacy, on the athletics, they don't have to actually let her. They just have to be able to be a participant within that season and finish from beginning to end.
Correct. And so we purposely made it, we worded it the way of meaningful participation in a student group or club because, just talking athletics, if a student would get hurt and not participate, but you know, some kids will never show up again, that's up to the coach. But some kids are still going to come to practice every day, still come to games. And so that's still meaningful participation. And you know, so they do not have to let her, they just have to be, a coach or an advisor needs to say, yes, they were there and participated in our club.
Good, thanks.
Anything else on graduation requirements? And I will change gears. Katie, will you pull up the extended learning plan? Governor Dewine issued an order for all schools to come up with a learning recovery and extended learning plan through twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. It needed to be presented to the public and the board by April first. So Katie, Amy, and I sat down and worked diligently through this template and what was required in the learning plan and then brought it to our district task force for review. The state did give a recommended template, but we did find ourselves repeating because they had it broken down in spring of twenty-twenty-one, then summer of twenty-twenty-one, school year of twenty-one, twenty-two, school year of twenty-two, twenty-three, and we're doing the same things over and over. So we revamped the template and took some of the items that were recommended for the learning plan and put it in there. And when it is out, will be out on our website. And when you look at it, we really are doing a lot to identify students' needs already and meet students' needs for our gaps. We have a strong NTSS process. We are continuing to improve our multi-tier systems of support. We have multiple universal screeners and diagnostic assessments that we use for academics, behavior, social emotional. And throughout the district, a few times a year, we use that data and come back as teams, building teams, student teams, district teams. And so identifying the student needs, we have a good basis in there. There are some areas we need to improve. We need to improve a little bit of identifying some social emotional, but we've added Panorama in there. We are adding Branching Minds. They have a new social emotional survey, so we will add that next year. We also have ESPT at the middle school and high school. We've had it for a couple of years, and it's helping students identify their needs and some mental health screening. High school, we got graduation plans and student success plans that we're going to work through on that. So then the next part is what are you doing once you identify these needs that students have? And again, we've got a lot going on with reading recovery, foundations, Wilsons. All at the high school, we have, or at the elementary level, not high school, elementary level. We have our consultant from Montgomery County ESC, we have consultants from South Community. So we have a lot of resources out there. Again, I said, you know, we have some areas, K-12, we need to amp up our math intervention, but we are looking at ways of doing that. We are having the discussion of piloting an all-day kindergarten program. We have summer, we have partnerships with Dayton Metro Library, YMCA, City of Miami'sburg Parks and Rec to promote their summer programs. Grade six through twelve, again, intervention tutors. We use Achieve Three Thousand, we use for reading, we use Alex for math. We are looking at adding the after-school program back at the high school next year and some other learning opportunities and career opportunities. So again, we have a lot of good things in place and ways to build on them. So we just kind of highlighted that through our learning plan. This document is fluid, we will change it. Actually, I added something to it today that isn't in here, and that's the extended time of advisory at the middle school and how they're working to incorporate some intervention into that as well as the high school academic periods. So it is constantly changing as we move forward. Laura, do you want to add anything else?
I don't think so. And then I know that there has been an announcement, I think with the SR three money, that some of it will be set aside for specific funding. So at that point, we may need to add a budget of some sort to the plan. The governor would like to have us have this public and also submitted to the state by April first.
So Stacy, I know in the past we've talked about adding career tech programs to the high school, which we don't have now. Are we still in the process of looking at that and seeing what can be done?
We are looking, we are, not necessarily tech prep. We are looking across the board. Michael and I have had an initiative of just expanding career education as a whole at the high school, having our students ready to walk out the door when they leave Miami'sburg High School, whether they're walking into college to go into a career later, whether they're walking out to go to trade school, right into the workforce or the military. So that's where that Viking Prep class came from. We have a sophomore class that is career exploration. So they're taking a youth science aptitude test, what are they interested in? We now have a junior class, it's career experiences that Amy Elsas did. The kids are building an electronic portfolio with their resumes, applications, college essays, FAFSA, ACT prep, you know, they're focused on that. And then next year, we're adding a senior class where we're hoping to get kids pre-apprenticeships, job site visits, job shadows, and any of that piece. So we are looking as a whole, trying to prepare the whole student body for their career going out. So that's our career education. As far as career tech and tech prep, we currently don't have any teachers that are certified to teach our tech prep program, that is, are not already. So to add any tech prep programs, if we go tech prep, we would have to get some teachers credentialed and into getting that vocational license and taking college courses. But there are some programs that don't require that license, so I'm looking into those. Actually, Michael Black, Bob Newbauer, and I sat through a whole webinar yesterday on industry credentials. And just being able to get our students' industry credentials, not even necessarily in a tech, well, number one, adding them to our tech prep programs, what industry credentials are out there that would apply to those tech prep programs? And then what industry or, yeah, industry credentials can we blend into others? Like CPR is a one point, one point towards industry credentials. Every one of our students gets CPR in their health class, thank you, Chris. So that's one point out of that twelve, trying to get there. I do have a phone call with Sinclair tomorrow to try and look at maybe getting Dwayne Hensley credentialed through them to do some construction articulated courses. So maybe he, we could revamp his schedule a little bit, have him teach some of the articulated courses in the morning for the kids, get the kids out on the job sites, as well as then they also take some CCP courses. So the short answer to your question is we are looking at expanding our career tech program and career program. It just may not be specific tech prep programs.
Because I thought, I thought we got additional money if we had career tech programs.
We get career tech funding for our enrollment for our kids, and then it's spent on that program. The problem is the credentials. I mean, if I had, if I had a, if Dwayne was credentialed right now for tech prep, I'd jump on it. If I had somebody credentialed in marketing, if I had the big one, engineering, we had any of those, we'd jump on it. Teachers just don't have those credentials and those licenses.
I guess we need to explore some way of how we get those.
So either it's pay, you know, getting those, encouraging those teachers to go get it on their own, figuring out a way to pay it, or find staff, hire staff that has it, I don't know. So, yeah.
Thank you, and then Katie?
Thanks, Stacy.
You're welcome.
So I did share with you guys a, just my, my thoughts on our inter-district policy. So the inter-district transfer policy, we're talking about that policy that allows elementary students who live in one attendance area to ask to be, attend an elementary school in a different attendance area. So currently, the way that policy, the way the process is written, the policy just says, we allow it, is what the policy says. But the process for deciding the, making those decisions, basically, there is a deadline, application deadline. And that application is open the first day of school for the following year. And parents can apply to have that transfer, to, to ask for that transfer to be approved for, for the following year. And they can fill that out all the way up to June fifteen. Those applications are date, time stamped. And currently, what we do is we look at the ratios in the classrooms. And kindergarten is twenty to one, and one through five is twenty-three to one. And if there is space, then we do approve that transfer. If there is not space, then we do not approve the transfer. And then parents are asked to reapply each year so that we are able to rebalance classes and do things along that line. So in all of our discussions, you guys have asked some great questions and asked me to think about some different things, different ways to approach it. So based on our discussions, what I have proposed for your consideration is a policy that, I'm sorry, a process that puts some prioritization in the applications and then also does not require the parent to apply every year. So going into more detail, what we're looking at is priority number one would be staff members who have applied, who have children in the elementary and are asking for it, that they would be, their application would be considered first. After their applications are all considered, then we would go to students who have siblings already in the building they're asking to go to. So in other words, an incoming kindergarten, if their brothers, brother and sisters are already in that building, then they would have priority to be approved to go into that building as well, to keep family members together. And then last would be people who have completed the application by the stated deadline, which is June fifteen. And then, well, that would be third. The last would be people who would move into the district or whatever after June fifteen and ask for us to consider their application. So that would be a change, prioritizing versus just taking straight time, date stamp. The second thing that I asked you to consider is whether you would want to, what we call grandfather-in, the students who are currently approved for inter-district transfer, meaning that their parents would not need to reapply for next year, that they would stay where they are, if they choose to stay where they are, and they would remain there through their fifth grade year so that when they moved on to the middle school, that they would just move on to the middle schools, they would stay if, as long as they wanted to. That helps in the situations where you have students who maybe have been at a building for three years and then fourth grade comes along and we don't have space and we have to deny the application, which generally is emotional because obviously that student's been there for three years. So that does cause, you know, a lot of emotions and a lot of upset folks when we do that, going strictly by the numbers. And it would also, you know, it would reduce down the number of applications you're looking at each year because once they're in, they're in, sort of thing. The one thing that I did it, that I know we've talked and talked and talked about, I still recommend that we stick with a ratio, even if we are doing a priority, even if we are saying that staff members, children would be considered first and family members next. I still recommend that we stick with a prior, with a, sorry, a ratio. Because what the ratios are designed to do is to not cause A, a need for extra staff members in a particular building because you're approving more students to go to that building. And B, not overcrowding particular classrooms because you've approved over the ratio. And then C would be the cost to the district for class size payout. So maybe you don't add a staff member, but if you've put that classroom over what our contract says for class size payout, then you would be paying class size payout in order to put a student in that classroom that didn't live in that attendance area. So I recommend that we stick to the ratios, but obviously, I'll, I'll do what, what you feel is best. And then the third, the other piece that you guys asked me about was hardship. And many of our policies do say that it is the superintendent's privilege to approve if there is a hardship case that she believes would fit, fit that definition. So what I did recommend is that if a parent does call me and say, if they've been denied, and they call me and, and discuss with me a situation that would be considered a hardship, then I would just collect the information and then provide that information to Laura and Dr. Blessing and Anne as the board president. And between the two of them, they can look at the information, talk to the parent, do whatever research they want to do on the situation, and then make a decision as to whether or not they would override the ratio for that parent. I feel like that probably would the best, be the best approach because then you all are aware that there is a, a situation that we're looking into and you don't get surprised by that. And then it also leaves you as the top authorities in the district to make that decision versus me or my secretary or a building principal or someone along that line. So that's, that's kind of hitting the gist. I, you know, I sent you guys the policy last week so that you'd have time to read over it, so. Looking for questions?
I might be looking at this wrong. I'm not against the grandfathering in
Okay.
at all. But if that is taking place and we do have move-ins, and what do we do at that point then when numbers exceed the ratio?
There's always a chance that numbers are going to exceed the ratio with move-ins because even if we, so, so we wait as long as we can to approve them typically. And this year, we did it in July, early July, just because it's, it's hard for parents to wait till the week before school to find out what move-in they're going to. So we do it in July. So you, you still have a fair number of move-ins. It's never been so gross to, to cause like a humongous increase in the need for it to add a staff member or anything like that. But all, you deal with that all year long. The other thing too is that we start the year oftentimes looking like we're The other thing too is that we start the year oftentimes looking like we're over ratio. But then when other school buildings start, other districts start, then you start getting the withdrawals that you didn't know existed because they won't ask you for records until they open the doors and somebody registers there.
Right.
So it does balance in the long run. We, we do that, we play that game all year long. I mean, it's, we're over, we're under, we're over, we're under. I mean, it's, there's just a lot of movement that occurs.
Okay. Yeah, because I, uh, the grandfathering in, I would think would be mentally better for, you know, I mean, knowing ahead of time. But I just wondered as far as, you know, when the numbers get up there, if that.
Yeah. And, and we do every year, Steve and Amy and, um, and I oftentimes, you know, every year, that's a process where we're looking at what those classroom numbers look like and deciding if staff members need to move, shift, do whatever happens. So that, that happens every year. Um, so as a matter of fact, you know, we've had many conversations with you guys about what the numbers look like for next year. If we grandfather, we got to put those interdistrict kids back in there and then look at it and see before we make any staffing decisions. So you'll know, you know, in July, so with the grandfather, actually you'll know sooner with the grandfathering as to what, what's going to look like and how that's going to impact.
Thank you.
And the, and the reality is, is if we do get to a point where, and this has happened throughout Miami'sburg's history, there have been times when we grandfathered and there's been times when we haven't grandfathered. And then we've gone back to grandfathering and we haven't. So there, and most of the time those decisions are made when built, a particular building or whatever starts to really get overloaded because of it. Um, and that's when you got to kind of look at your policy again, your process again and say, okay, we've got to stop the grandfathering because this is giving out, or the other word, so. Or we got to look at shuffling everything.
Anybody else?
Any thoughts on that? Are you, any objections to it? Go forward the way it's written?
I think you've done a great job, Katie, of putting this together, so thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I know it's been a tremendous amount of work on your part.
Right. Yeah, thanks, Katie. Yeah, and I like that, I, you know, I think that higher pri, the priority of our staff is important. I think it shows that we value our staff and especially after COVID, anything we can do to show that we value our staff is important. And I appreciate that you did do all this hard work on it. And I know it's not going to come out perfectly for everyone, but I think it will be better. And, um...
Yeah, and it wasn't meant to put a ton of more onto your plate. It was meant to make it easier in the long run.
Yeah.
To, because, you know, depending upon which policy you looked at, I think we had two or three.
They're generally all related to one another, yeah.
But, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, it'll take some burden off of you, I think, I hope.
Yeah.
And I, I just wanted to apologize. I totally forgot to read that resolution of appreciation. Do you want me to go back to that for Pearl Drake? I'm sorry. Is it okay? Okay, thanks, Katie and Stacy, um, Mrs. Moore and Mrs. Lucas. Okay. Next, we have the first reading of our board policy. Basically, did anyone, um, Mr. Homan, do you want to talk about that?
So if you remember back in, um, 2018, we redid the board policy. We worked with OSBA. It was, um, a pretty long process to get through and to update them. So as we've been going through and, and revamping things ourself, we've noticed every now and then there's little things that were missing that we had before that weren't in the book. And so this civility policy, when you, um, approve the student handbooks every year, this policy is actually in the handbook. And that policy covers, you know, appropriate behavior of, of, of staff, talking to parents and students and vice versa and all of that. And so, you know, since we say it's a board policy, we want to make sure it's within the board policy so it all matches together, so. So that's what it is. When you see the first reading, so this policy is actually what, what, what has been in our board policy see prior to 2018 as well, but the second half got chopped out, but we still have it in our, in our student handbook, so. We're just trying to align everything and keep it all, all together, so.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Homan.
And then we'll, we'll, it'll be on your April board agenda the next month to go ahead and approve it, so.
Okay. Next, we'll go to the approval revision of the 2021-22 school calendar. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval revision of the 2021-2022 school calendar.
First by Lewis, second by Toadvine. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education adopt the revised 2021-22 school year calendar as attached. Any questions?
I am plugged out right now, so.
Okay.
So, do you want me to give you a little background history on this? So.
Yeah.
So obviously, we're still playing, like, I call it, you know, catch-up from COVID from last school year in which we, we pushed back our start date, um, till after, I think it was after Labor Day. It's kind of like everything's starting to run together in my head of, when did we really start? And so if we would have done that and kept our current calendar of 21-22, where it was, it would be a very crunched, um, very shortened, um, somewhere in terms of that. So one of the things, if you remember the start of this school year, um, that we did trying to get back into students in the building and starting back with kids in the building, was to create some, um, professional development days about that to kind of get jump-started back into the building. And so the calendar committee kind of looked at that and, um, wanted to kind of mirror what we did, you know, this school year in terms of that. I know, um, one of the questions is we've been, you know, as a calendar committee and, and as a board looking at all that is, is, um, professional development days in terms of that, and how does that affect the calendar? And how do those days affect the whole COVID and the learning plans and all those? And so I think, um, you know, one of the questions as we go through, um, is, is we look, you know, each year what we do is we plan out two years ahead of time and we bring it to the board to look at. And so the, the next item on the agenda, I'm kind of jumping around, but it kind of all, kind of flows together. With the 22-23, the calendar committee wanted to mirror it to match 21-22 with, with those days in there. I think one of the things that we can, um, talk about, because what we do every year is we take a look at how our, um, the start of the school year looks, how do the breaks look? We spend a lot of time trying to balance out semesters, um, you know, especially second semester. You know, this year we've actually had some calamity days. So I don't know if that's you, Dr. Blessing, or if it's the Indiana weather, I'm not sure how that works. But we try to work on all those things. And, and I would believe, and, and I know Katie, Amy, um, Dr. Blessing and Laura, I think eventually we'd like to just to kind of get back where we started earlier in August to kind of end that semester, um, at the holiday break, even though you're at the end of course exams. So, and some of that will be, um, playing with the number of student days, number of PD days and things like that, so. Um, I know those, those are discussions that we had and I think that's a very reasonable thing to have as a calendar committee because we look at that every time when we go to draw them of, um, you know, are we meeting state hours for the students? You know, we do, we have a lot of, I don't want to say a lot of extra time, but Miami'sburg has always been above and beyond the requirements for that. But obviously too, we also understand that, you know, the pandemic has caused, you know, not a typical year and it's going to take some time to catch up with all that, so. You know, I think what we do is when we, um, kind of, um, come back to the committee for that next, the next presentation of next year is to talk about how does that look and kind of starting to get back to whatever normal or normalcy you want to call it to, to get back on those calendars and stretches that we were at, so. Hopefully that makes sense. You know, it's...
It does, Steve, but I just have to make a comment that when I look at the number of teacher days and the number of student instruction days, we're down to 170 days of student instruction, which to me, a, and you all know, I'm a proponent of year-round school going to 20 days, but it used to be 178 days. Teachers had a work day before, work day after, two-parent teacher conferences. And then we build in PE days or PD days. And I understand this year has been nuts and next year, you know, trying to build in, it, it's, it's okay, but I am concerned that our students aren't getting the amount of instructional days they need. And if you build in a few calamity days and it goes below 170, it could go down to 165. And to me, that's a concern, that our students are not getting the days of instruction that they really need to, to get. So I'm just going to throw that out, so.
No, and, um, Sharon, I think that's a very valid concern, and that's a very valid concern that is, is a calendar committee because as we do meet, they will ask, you know, what are things that you have heard, what are things out there? You know, we hear, and I am more than happy to, to talk about those, those things. It used to be, um, before we went to hours, um, so Sharon, what you're referring to is, you know, we'd have 174 days, but of those 174 days, you back out two days for parent-teacher conference days that the state allowed you to count, and then you back off two more of your PD days to get you to the 174 that I actually call actual students-in-seat days, you know, in terms of that. But no, I, I understand as we look at that every year, you know, that's very valid. And I think as we try to get back to the, what I keep calling the normal, or hopefully normal-normal of what it was before. But the calendar committee does take that into consideration and that, that is something definitely that, that I am very willing to talk about and to look at that and, and to, and to be honest, to get back into, um, ending before that, uh, winter break, we'd have to make those adjustments to get the days in, so.
I just want to throw it out there that I'm concerned about our days, the students' instruction days, because we have so much to teach and we keep getting more added, 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 added. And as we take days away, I see it as a problem.
Yeah.
And I guess I'm alone. I don't know, but...
Well, I, I think, Sharon, that, that what you're saying is, is a concern, no doubt. But, um, with the craziness, uh, that our teachers have been through, our administrators have been through, uh, and now we're being, we're looking at recovery plans. Uh, whenever you change plans, people got to, uh, be taught, revised on, uh, you know, what to do. And I think the teachers need to be able to, um, collaborate with each other and with our administrators. And, um, there has to be time given to them to be able to do that because of the unusual circumstances that we're under. And, and I think Steve kind of also said, you know, he's looking forward to when we can go back to, to what you're saying and, and, and have a more normal time. But, but training and, and, uh, is going to be involved with this, you know, the recovery for our students because our students are going to be behind. I mean, ev, all the students in the nation, around the world even, are going to be behind because they haven't been able to be in classes and being face-to-face, so catch-up is going to be part of our plan here and, and then the people got to be trained to, to do that, so.
You know, the, um...
It'll get better.
The other thing that, um, I am more than happy to do, because once we run to, once calendars are approved, shall we send them out? Post them on the web and that. And then typically around, um, end of December, beginning of January, I send, uh, an email out to the calendar committee. And so I always keep my notes of what we're looking at for the next year. So this is something that once we go through this to say, hey, we need to start thinking back to, to get back to our, what I would call our normal cycle. And part of that normal cycle needs to be taken a look at how, how to really balance what I actually call students, student-in-seat days, you know, in terms of that.
My concern is, once it's put in place, it's hard to change. And this is for the next two years, or it will be for the next two years. So then, is it just going to continue on in perpetuity?
No, and I think the, um, other thing we can, um, discuss, um, in terms of that is, is we kind of take a step back of why were these put into place before, just as we've done before with increasing the number of days, you know, in terms of that, so. I think it's a very valid point. I think it's a very valid point. So I can go ahead and plant that seed now of, okay, because we're starting to think through, put, put this on your radar, you know, what we need to do.
Yeah, and I, you know, when I talked to Sharon, I thought that too with, you know, maybe the next time around, we need to go back up a day or so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I do feel that right now our teachers do need a lot of collaboration time to get through this next year. And they didn't get their professional development this year. So, um, whether they have it through our district or they attend webinars or, uh, workshops on their own on those days, I, I think it's much needed. So.
Yeah, and...
I agree with her though about the teacher.
And that's also another thing is, you know, we have our, um, monthly LMC meetings, um, with, um, MCTA. So that's also a topic that we'll go ahead and, let's just start the conversation now. Hey, as we're looking to get back to where we were before, you know? As I always say, I think we're out a year ago from now. You, you know, a year from now, we were all shut down and all that, and look how far we've come this way. So just like is, um, you know, Stacy talked about a lot of planning and getting things ready in the recovery plan. I think this becomes part of that recovery plan too, and just kind of starting that conversation out, uh, to put it in the forefront. So I will, you know, we'll, we'll just start the conversation now with LMC of, hey, trying to get back, how's that going to look? You know, and a lot of that might be, okay, we're going to start backing up the days, so many days now to the school year in terms of that, so.
Good luck.
I know, it's like... I know, it's hard to start, uh, you know, you can't have everything, you can't start later in August, have a fall break and be out before winter break to have a first semester, so. Kind of have to, it's the juggling act of, of how to make that all happen, so.
Well, thanks to the people that worked on the committee. I know that takes a lot of effort. Does anyone have anything else or questions? All right, we'll roll call then.
Mr. Ramsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
No.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Okay, next we have a presentation of the 2022-23 calendar. And Steve, do you want to talk about, that is basically the same calendar, so. Okay, so we can just kind of go on then? All right. Uh, consent agenda, approval of overnight extended student trips. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the overnight extended student trips. Deanne Keppel, Aubrey Asbill, Rob, Rob Belvo, Phil Butler, Alex Harvey, McKenna England for the varsity softball postseason in Akron, Ohio, May 8th through June 12th, 2021. Sean Ridley, Katie Lay, Bill Hill, varsity boys tennis postseason to be, to be determined, May 10th through June 5th, 2021. Melvin Johnson, Lauren Darden, Anthony Covington, Jonathan Garrett, Doug Hortman, Keith Vincent, Jeremy Wacos, Wacoski. Um, boys and girls track and field postseason, Columbus, Ohio, May 3rd through June 5th, 2021. Steve Kurtz, Pete Zink, Richie Davidson, Scott Helter, Tim Henry, Jerry Reedy, Jonathan Wade, Randy Pollan, Russ Ponsel and Sean Hopkins. The varsity baseball postseason site to be determined, May 15th through June 12th, 2021. John Keenly, Richard Agans, Jeff Cross, Corey Louve, Ray Eaton. Boys lacrosse postseason, Delaware, Ohio, May 15th through June 5th, 2021. Boys lacrosse postseason, Delaware, Ohio, May fifteenth through June fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Tim Hecht, Robert Rando, Matty Cross, David Knoll, Mackenzie Bowman, Emily Rock. Girls lacrosse postseason, site to, to be determined, May fifteenth through June fifth, two thousand twenty-one. And next we have the approval of board member training. In accordance with board policy, BHBA, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following requests for training as offered by the Ohio School Board Association. Governance through OSBA series, governing with a visionary framework, and the total cost fifty dollars. Then we have the approval of the class of twenty twenty-one early graduates, Myamisburg High School. Recommended action, Michael Black, principal of Myamisburg High School, has recommended to Sean Christian and Courtney Strunk for graduation pending satisfactory completion of all state and local requirements. Do I have a motion?
I may we approve the consent agenda items A through C.
Second.
Okay, first by Angel, second by Toadvine. Any discussion? And roll call?
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Okay, next we'll move on to the human resources agenda item. Approval of personnel reports, certificated, classified. Employment in the Myamisburg, oh, do I have a motion?
No, not yet.
Okay, wait, recommend.
It is recommended.
And action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. Do I have a motion?
Not yet.
Not yet, still? Okay, I'm sorry. Employment in the Myamisburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII and FBI criminal record check-in, accordance with Ohio revised code, and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with adopted board policies. Now, do I have a motion?
Now, I will say, I will move for the approval of the personnel report certificated and classified.
Second.
Okay, first by Amsler, second by Lewis. Anybody?
This actually goes to Mr. Homan.
Yeah.
If he has anything to say in regards to this resolution. Hearing none, then we could go take a vote.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Okay, approval of personnel report supplemental stipend, certificated, classified. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel report supplemental stipend, certificated, classified. Employment in the Myamisburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII and FBI criminal record check in accordance with Ohio revised code and pre-employment drug screening, screening in accordance with adopted board policies. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of personnel report supplemental stipend, certificated, classified.
Second. Okay, first by Lewis, second by Angel. Mr. Homan? Okay. Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
I shall abstain.
Okay, next we have the approval of administrative contract renewals. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following administrative contract renewals. So these are all three-year contracts. Michael Black, principal, Amy Dobson, Director Elementary Curriculum, Steve Homan, Assistant Superintendent, Director of Human Resources, Rebecca Huber, Principal, Nikki Johnson, Supervisor Special Education, Brittany Lipinski, Supervisor Special Education, Kelly Lee Marker, Principal, Summer Maschtrinardi, Assistant Principal, Jim Montevan, Licensed Social Worker, Brooke Moore, Licensed Social Worker, Stacy Moore, Director Secondary Curriculum, Robert Newbauer, Supervisor Workforce Development and Career Exploration, Jeremy Selyar, Principal. Do I have a motion? And Baker Rich, Rich Baker, classified, effective July first, two thousand twenty-one. Rich Baker, our Maintenance Supervisor, and that's also for three years.
I move for the approval of the mentioned administrator's contract renewals.
Second.
Okay, first by Toadvine, second by Angel. I mean, Amsler. Sorry.
Now we know why Mrs. Huber stayed.
Yeah. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Okay, next we move to the approval of the five thousand dollars for two thousand twenty-one teacher mini-grants. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the five thousand dollar mini-grant appropriation for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. This is a joint funding program between the Board of Education and the Myamisburg Schools Education Foundation Advisory Board. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of the five thousand dollars for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two teacher mini-grants.
Second.
First by Toadvine, second by Lewis. Stacy, Mrs. Moore?
Yeah, we do this annually. The Foundation Board have just approved in March also to do their five thousand dollars. And then you match it. We will post that application after spring break and have teachers apply for up to a thousand dollars. It'll be due by June, the Foundation has the mini-grant committee that'll review them. I will say, don't be surprised if the Foundation wants to raise this in the next year or two, so. We've had some good projects.
That's not a bad thing.
No, it's not.
And we've had some really good projects come out of this, so.
Yes.
Because I think, Dale, you might know more than anybody. I mean, when I came on, I think it was at two thousand.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah.
And then I think since I've been on the board in the last seven, it's been raised to five, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, we did a little begging in it, and it happened.
Roll call.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
All right, authorization. Now we're going to the financial agenda items, the authorization for amendment to appropriations and certificate of estimated resources. It is recommended by the Treasurer CFO that the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources be amended as listed in the attached reports. Do I have a motion?
I move for the authorization for amendment to the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources.
Second.
First by Amsler and second by Angel. And Mrs. Hagaman?
Not really much to report this for February. The bulk of it was that, you know, the governor restored some of traditional school districts' funding, and they also restored the auxiliary school funds for non-public, in which we, we operate as their fiscal agent. So you will see the revenue side increase as well as the budget side for the auxiliary funds that we handle for Bishop Leibold and Dayton Christian.
Any questions, comments?
No, ma'am.
Roll call.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
All right, next we have the resolution accepting the amounts and rates and authorizing the necessary tax levies for tax year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. It is recommended by the Treasurer CFO and Superintendent that the Board of Education accept the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the County Auditor for Tax Year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the resolution accepting the amounts and rates and authorizing the necessary tax levies for the tax year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two.
A second.
First by Toadvine, second by Lewis.
You worried me with that pause, you know, I need this, we need to, to approve this so we can collect our tax dollars. But, um, yeah, this is, we do this annually. This is, these are rates as provided by the Montgomery County Auditor's Office, and this is your authorization for them to collect those taxes in those millage.
This is a roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Okay. Item C, approval of the four oh three B plan amendment. It is recommended by the Treasurer CFO that the Board of Education approve the attached four oh three B hardship amendment and SMM document. Do I have a motion?
I'll move for the approval of the four oh three B plan amendment.
Second.
First by Lewis, second by Toadvine. Ms. Hagaman?
Just like, as with everything else, COVID made some changes to our four oh three B plan, and, and we increased some opportunities for hardship borrowing against the four oh three B plan and things of that nature. So we need your approval to make that adjustment.
Any roll call? Did anybody?
Mrs. Angel?
I, I have a quick question.
Okay.
In terms of adjustments on that, were there any large, did we have any outstanding large adjustments at all? I didn't, I didn't look at it, I'm sorry, I apologize.
It, it increases an, an individual's opportunity to borrow against their four oh three B. And I've always been a proponent to letting people, you know, use their money in a way that best, you know, supports their efforts, you know? So that, and it gives them a longer term to pay back that obligation, so. You know, it's, they were, they extended that for everyone, so we thought we would take advantage of that as well.
Okay.
Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Okay, D, the approval of partial release of mortgage, the Henderson Reserve. It is recommended by the Treasurer CFO that the Board of Education approve the attached partial release of mortgage. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve the partial release of mortgage to Henderson Reserve.
Second.
First by Angel, second by Amsler.
I had to do some digging on this one. Um, this, we had a lien that was placed against some properties in the Henderson Reserve and Settlers Walk from nineteen ninety-eight. Um, and as part of that lien, twenty-five hundred dollars has to be paid to release specific properties or lots in, in Settlers Walk. And we did receive the twenty-five hundred dollars for this lot. And so although these agreements have, this, these releases have not been approved by the Board in the past, I wanted to make sure that you do approve them in the future, at least when I get them, so now that I know what they are. Um, because this is the first one I've received in my five years. So just need your approval, we've received the check, and we wanna do a release on that piece of property.
There's, there's a.
There's a long story, yes.
Yeah, there's a long story, a lot of them there, but, yeah. And that's a long time ago, but.
It was, it took some digging, but we got it figured out.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next we go to acceptance of donations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following list of donations. All monies will be used through each school's zero-one-eight account unless indicated otherwise. Do I have a motion?
I move for the acceptance of donations.
Second.
A first by Amsler and second by Lewis. I have a hundred dollars from Kathleen and James Casper to the Mark Twain Elementary School Garden Project. Two thousand one hundred face masks valued at one thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars from Interstate Ford. Four hundred dollars from North, Northrop gunman in recognition of David Huber's volunteerism to Mount Elementary School for teacher supplies and professional development. The following donations were made to Myamisburg City Schools for the Community Connections Program. Fifty dollars from Carol Abner. I'm not sure what that means, correct? Okay, correction, okay, thank you. Thirty-seven ten-dollar Kroger gift cards from Helping Hands. A fifty-dollar Kohl's gift card from Alan Jackson. One thousand dollars from Myamisburg Rotary Club. The following donations were made to Myamisburg City Schools for the Campus Quest Project, the Matching Funds Initiative, twenty thousand dollars from Anonymous. The following donations were made to Myamisburg City Schools to the MHS Wrestling Program, the Matching Fund Initiative, five thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars from Anonymous, and two hundred and fifty dollars from Mike and Pam Masters. Roll call? Any question?
Then the Campus Quest one, is that, were we not expecting that? Obviously, it was anonymous.
It's part of that Matching Funds Initiative. There was a list of donations we accepted last month.
I didn't know if that was a part of that, or.
Yeah, that was part of, that's the actual matching of the donations that we did get. So, yeah, it was unexpected, but, a few months ago, but we expected it this month. So.
Cool.
Um, I asked that we change the way the format of the donations, so it was easier to read. Is this better, or do you wanna go back to the way we did it before?
No, I like this.
You like this?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
All right, and then next we have report, and we have the MVCTC news from Joe Isakovich, and I believe Dr. Blessing will read those.
Yes. Good evening, following is the MVCTC report for your review. Enrollment, applications for the class of two thousand twenty-three keep arising. Currently, we have received one thousand one hundred and seventy-eight applications and are expecting additional. The National Technical Honor Society, we have a record of one hundred and seventy-four students who qualified to be accepted into the ranks of NTHS. The ceremony will be held virtually on Sunday, March twenty-first, at two o'clock in the afternoon. The ceremony can be viewed at www.nvctc.com. This is hard to say with the mask on. Instruction update, by building section and finished, project projected finish date. The south wing is complete, the north wing will, uh, April nineteenth. East wing, east building, demo, August sixteenth. I talk pretty loud, Dale. Uh, MAC section, December fourteenth. Ag Barnes, July twenty-ninth of two thousand twenty-two. The second story, November fifteenth of two thousand twenty-two. The west building renovation, December twenty-ninth, twenty-two. And the all work will be complete by January twenty-fourth of two thousand twenty-two. Senior recognition, based on the latest guidelines, we will be holding this ceremony at the Wright State University Natter Center. at the Wright State University Nutter Center on Sunday, May 16th. Due to our numbers, we will hold the first session at 1:00 through 2:30, and the second session will begin at 5:00 and conclude at 6:30. This is a requirement by Wright State University for proper cleaning in between sessions. We are truly excited to be able to have the ceremony for seniors to celebrate this important day. The MVCTC Prom, we are pleased to be able to have our prom at the MVCTC, at, and will host two evenings, Friday, April 9th, and Saturday, April 10th, from 8:00 to 11:00 PM on both nights. Friday will be for juniors only, and Saturday will be for seniors only. All health guidelines will be followed, and no outside guests will be allowed. Again, we are absolutely delighted to be able to do this for our students. We also want to recognize and congratulate Shelby Ellis, a graduate of our Adult Education Program. Shelby is from Miami'sburg and has graduated from our Practical Nursing Education Program. We wish you the best. Thanks, that's it for March, let me know if you have any questions, stay healthy. Joe Isakovich.
Thank you. And then next we have the Legislative Liaison. Mrs. Angel?
I don't have to say much because Stacy is on.
Yeah.
The other thing is, there is a bill in the House now that's looking at revising the State Report Card, so we don't know what's going to happen with that. And the Fair Funding Bill is, um, in the Senate, and they're looking at hearings and trying to decide what they're going to do, so, we'll just see where it goes from here. That's it.
All right, and next we have the Student Achievement Liaison. Mr. Amsler?
I will do my portion of what I was going to do now, so we can get that out of the way. Uh, eighth grade students, Ahmad Azim, Crystal Bearclaw, and Cadence Hackworth, upon the successful completion of high, uh, high school and meeting the entrance requirements of the partner college or university, or awarded scholarships that allow them to attend college at little or no cost to them or their two families. Partner colleges and universities include Central State University, Denison University, Kettering College, Miami University, Miami University Reynolds, Ohio Northern University, Sinclair Community College, the University of Dayton, Wittenberg University, and Wright State, and Xavier University. So those are the two eighth grades, or three, actually, that come, that have those choices.
Thank you. And then, uh, next we have the Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition, and I believe that Mr. Tovine attended the meeting today.
I did.
Yeah.
That was a very good meeting, and a very lengthy meeting, but, um, there were a lot of good things spoken on. Uh, the VA Mental Health Mobile Unit will be, um, out in Montgomery County for the, uh, Mental Health Month, which is next month, and they will be targeting three areas throughout Montgomery County. Um, the Outreach Growth Organization, they are now help, uh, they're just now putting out this coming month, help to incarcerated women and their families to help overcome addictions, and for the families to be able to, uh, take part in recovery of the addicted individual. How, and it teaches coping with, um, some of the problems and stuff that arise, uh, you know, when someone comes out of prison after addiction, there's a, a lot of things that they need to overcome. Um, Kyle Shaw spoke, um, and, uh, he's from, uh, Hope Line and the Referral Recovery. Um, he's, if you don't know Kyle, um, he is a, um, recovered addict himself, and has been for years, and he, uh, started a program years ago, and it's, and it's built up and built up to a point to where now, um, he is, uh, helping, um, addicts to initiate treatments. Uh, the organization is, and he, and him as the leader, uh, once they, uh, initiate the treatments, they need rides and stuff back and forth to treatments, they are lining up that now, so that, uh, if, um, an addict is in recovery and they need to get to their treatments, all they got to do is make a phone call. Um, they're also following through now with continued help, uh, to obtain housing, once they come out of treatment, uh, helps to connect them up with jobs, uh, with family counseling, uh, and, uh, pretty much everything you need to, uh, continue into recovery for the rest of your life, uh, hooks them up with, uh, AA and different places like that too, so it's, it's a, it's a very good program. Um, it's very similar to what his hope for Miami'sburg does, uh, his Hope Team Challenge here, Miami'sburg does. Uh, Larry Sexton of ADMS, he spoke, um, and ADMS is the Alcohol, Drug, and Mental Health Services, and, um, the mental health, uh, wellness education training is going to be offered to educators and the first responders. Um, that's going to come about here in the near future, uh, the, the class will be offered to, to be both in person, and it'll be virtual, uh, it'll take, it'll be a six to eight hour class, and those who complete the class, the training, uh, will be awarded a three-year certificate. Um, basically what this involves is, is if there are people that, such as our EMS man here, Mr. Ambler, um, confront somebody that is, say, suicidal, uh, there's training to help them how to talk those people down, and, 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 you know, things to say and not to say, and, and so forth, and it's, it's about an eight-hour training, but it, the certificate is good for three years. They're also going to offer a, uh, health first aid instructor class, a mental health first aid instructor class, if someone, someone already has, uh, the mental hel, what, the, 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 a mental health wellness education course under their belt, and they want to be an instructor, um, that's going to be offered also. Uh, these classes are free, um, thing that's pretty amazing about it is ADMS is actually footing a bill for the people in these classes, and each person's, they're going to be about $2,000 to get them through the training, and ADMS is, is, uh, offering that to, uh, those people that, um, would like to, to do that. Um, the dates will be, to be determined here in the near future, and will be made available. Um, the county and some of the surrounding counties, we're, they're putting together now a, um, program, um, that, that can, uh, be used to track overdoses better, and, um, the reason why they're spending the time and the energy and the money to do this is that, in the past, uh, deaths were basically, if, if, if it was a fatal overdose, it was, you know, kept tracked of, but now, um, they're finding out that there are so, there's people that are overdosing twice or three times on the same day, uh, which is crazy. Uh, Mr. Ambler, I think he had one once upon a time, didn't you have a, a young lady that overdosed three times in one day?
Yeah. Well, that's not funny.
Yeah, no, it's not, but I mean, you know, it's, 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 but it, but it does happen.
But yes, you are correct, I did have a girl that, that overdosed three times in one day, and, okay, move on.
Yeah, 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 but anyway, that's not uncommon, and, um, the, what this is going to do is, is, let me, let me start over here real quick, quick, okay? Um, this, this database is being set up so that law enforcement, hospitals, and EMS people, uh, all their information can be compiled about fatal overdoses and non-fatal overdoses, and that's going to give everybody a better idea where all these federal grants and so forth, where the, that money can be targeted better to help, uh, help solve this problem of, of addiction, okay, and overdoses. Uh, Senator Portman, um, has put in two bills, um, that he's supporting, uh, right now, and one's called the Fight for Fentanyl Act. Um, it is confronting these big pharmaceuticals that are, um, putting this stuff out there, and, and some, some of it's found, unknowingly found in some drugs that are being put out now, and they want to put a stop to this, the mystery behind what's in a drug, uh, and that, they got to have an act to do that, that's a shame, but it's what's going on. Uh, there's also another one, it's called the Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act, and it's helped people to understand what federal grants and funds that are being placed towards, uh, addiction now and recovery, uh, where those, where those funds are coming from, and, um, the amounts and stuff, so it's, it's going to be tracked, and, and they'll be able to be more accountability there, okay, so that, um, the organizations, like I have been mentioning, that receive a lot of these funds, there'll be follow-ups to, to make sure that things are going the way that they're supposed to go. I hope that made sense. Um, this is kind of an interesting fact that came out of it. Since COVID-19 pandemic checks have been issued, there've been a huge increase in overdoses and fatalities in Montgomery County, um, which doesn't really surprise you, I mean, and just common sense would tell you that might happen, but it's, it's something that, uh, they were really hitting hard today. Uh, the next meeting will be, um, on May 20th at 2:00, uh, people can, uh, virtually go, and all they got to do is, um, go to the website, and they can listen and see what's going on. Sorry it took so long, but there's a lot done today.
Thank you. Um, then, yeah, I have the district news and information, and the latest, and the first thing is the Making a Difference awards, and those honorees include Mark Twain Principal Kelly Lee Marker, Jane Chance Elementary School Staff, who assists the car riders at JCE, and District School Nurse Melissa Junker. Kelly was nominated by her Mark Twain staff, who made a list of the top 10 reasons she should receive a Making a Difference Award. Jessica Hoben, Michelle Anspa, Joey Supinger, Kathy Barnes Miller, Sarah Hubers, Sandra Johnson, and Angela Gombieski were nominated by Principal Dale Guyer and JCE staff. Mr. Guyer said, whether these ladies are getting 45-plus car rider names daily from vehicles, assuring that those same students are getting into the correct cars to go home, running through the parking lot, going from car to car, or using themselves as our traffic officer, they make sure that the correct bulldog goes home in the correct vehicle. Melissa Junker was nominated by Nurse Kelly Waugh. Kelly said, COVID-19 has brought about many challenges and obstacles this school year. Melissa Junker spent most of her summer educating herself and seeking out learning opportunities through the Ohio Department of Health in order to learn as much as possible about COVID-19. Nurse Melissa then utilizes information and experience to assist our district administrators and other school nurses to create policies and procedures pertaining to the virus to be put into place for the 2021 school year. Full nominations for Kelly Lee Marker, the JCE staff, and Melissa Junker can be read at miamisburgcityschools.org. You know, and I did, I did talk to Melissa re, late, recently, and she said other districts had reached out to her for all the protocols and, and everything that she had put in place this year, so, she was a source for other districts, and that was pretty cool.
I, I do also want to mention that, um, just a point of reference, Melissa's our junior nurse, she's only been with, uh, the district for two years, she's only been a school nurse, um, for two years, and she really took the bull by the horns and led us through this, um, pandemic, and helped me and the rest of us to develop the policies and making sure, and she's first to let me know when she hears something new, so that we're up to date, and she's just been phenomenal, so I really appreciate Kelly nominating her, I think it was well deserved.
All right, I guess we'll go around the table, we'll start with you, Mr. Tovine.
Well, I think that there's a, a lot going on, a lot of people to be thanked this evening, um, but very, very special thank you to the Central Office, um, for, um, just tirelessly working, there's a lot of stuff been put on your folks' plate, and, um, you know, the Treasurer's Office, there's a lot of things going through there, uh, that's very different, uh, we're living in a different world, folks, and, uh, the teachers, um, they, they, most of them are just working tirelessly, you know, and, and putting in two or three more hours, and they're not getting paid anymore for it, so, um, you know, just a big thanks, and I, I've heard a lot of, of good things this past month from parents, you know, when, when, Dale Toadvine's out in the Kroger store, and people walk up that know me and, and start talking, you know, I, I really haven't heard, hardly heard anything negative, it's been a very positive month, and that's fantastic, you know, that's all I'm going to say. That's all I got to say about that.
I wanted to thank Mrs. Moore, Mrs. Lucas, for coming in, giving your reports, very informative, very good, thanks for the time you spent on that. Um, also, I wanted to thank Mrs. Dobson on all your hard work with the All Day Kindergarten Pilot Program, all the families that completed the survey on the All Day Kindergarten, and big thanks to all the teachers that completed the survey, um, a lot of good questions, comments, things like that. Seems a lot of, a lot of interest. You done?
Yeah, I'm, I'm done, I don't ramble. Say what I want to say. I'll be quick tonight, because I think I got to go into work. Um, I will concur, um, thanks to the ladies for all your hard work, Miss Amy that's sitting back there in the back as well. Um, I wasn't here last month, so Scott, I don't know if you were here last month or not, but since I'm here this month, and this is the first time I've seen you in a while, you know, we, we can extend this table up a little bit longer, and we can put you up in the spotlight as well, so, um, other than that, I will, uh, bypass a lot of my talking and move on.
Yeah, it's been a long night. Um, I did want to thank Katie Lucas from our Student Services, I, I just really looked forward to seeing that COVID dashboard every week, I think it provided parents with some, a comfort level, and, and, you know, with some transparency about what was going on in our schools, and I, I know that was a lot of work to put that together every week, and it's certainly appreciated, and, and ditto to what, um, Tim and, uh, Chris said about Stacy and Katie and Amy. And, um, yeah, and I just, I, I'll just keep it short too, we'll just keep moving along, but just one thing, I just want to, you know, continue to praise all staff, from administration to our teachers, our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, just for their perseverance during COVID, their creativity, and just their hard work. I know I was in a school this week, and it's starting to get hot, and the mask and everything, and I thought to myself, yeah, you know, this is hard, and, and they're, they're doing well, and I appreciate it so much.
I'll just say ditto.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you to Tina and her staff for spending the time to institute a new way of doing business in her office, I know they put a lot of artwork into it, a lot of time, so, let's hope there are a lot of glitz, there's always a glitchoo, but thank you to your staff for the time they put into us.
Thank you, you know, I appreciate that, um, like, I know I've sent out a lot of emails, because I had to cut down some systems and do a lot of things, but we are successfully moved over to the new software redesigned by the state, and we're learning as we go here, so we're going to run our first round of checks tomorrow, and we'll be running our first round of payroll, so bear with us. Um, my staff did an amazing job keeping me caught, as we tried to balance every little thing as we went around, as we went through and moved every PO, every thing in payroll, everything over to the new system, so, um, hopefully things will go well, so, still a little stress, but we'll get there, yeah, so, we're doing okay.
Mr. Homan?
That's very short.
Okay.
Um, we're going to be sponsoring another, um, COVID vaccine clinic with Um, we're going to be sponsoring another, um, COVID vaccine clinic with Rite Aid. I will be offering, um, five hundred additional shots, and we'll be doing that on Monday, March twenty-ninth. And then three weeks later, on March nineteenth at the middle school. And it's going to be for Pfizer. And what we're going to do is we're going to kind of have Michael Black send it out first to the high school, through the morning announcements, because the Pfizer can be sixteen years old and sixteen years of age and older to do that. So I think that gives us another opportunity to, to add another layer of protection to our students and our community. And it was talked about before, getting even back on track with some more normalcy in terms of that. But I give a, a very big thank you to Heather Wright and Nicole Calvert. They've been working a lot with me to make these vaccinations work. And we've learned a lot. We have lots of different groups on a calendar of when their second dose is having to reschedule. And, um, it's been, they, they've been troopers through all this to do that. So, um, this Sunday is our second dose of our community vaccination. Well, we had three hundred shots before, so we have that coming up on Sunday. And, and Mrs. Nice said, oh, you're working at it. And, um, Mrs. Toadvine's going to work at it, too. And we got a lot of staff members who, who came with their family. And they're like, hey, thanks for doing this. Can I help you out and work it? And we're like, that would be great. So if any of you would like to work the next one, we'll take some volunteers to, uh, to do that. We're going to, we're going to have Michael Black send out an email a couple of days, and then we're going to send it all out to our staff again. Um, last time when we sent the email blast out, all I had to do is say, please forward this, and we had two hundred shots done. And two hundred shots taken in less than an hour.
What's the second date?
The, it's going to be March twenty-ninth.
Do you have a time?
Mar- on a Monday?
It's going to be on a Monday.
Okay.
At the middle school student dining. Four to nine. And then the follow-up will be on April nineteenth. So, um, we have not wasted a single dose. We, we have our people on, uh, speed dial of who can come up and who can get, um, up here. So it's been very good. Rite Aid has done a, um, fabulous job with us. And they've been a very good partner with us for the last several years, and, um, and our community is very grateful for them. And, um, Jamie Schaefer, who lives in the community, has been very instrumental in doing that. And, um, she will, on the way home from work, she'll bring the vial back with her for just enough. And she'll meet, um, people at a place and give them their, their donation, or, uh, vaccination, all that. So we are very, very grateful for them, so.
It was kind of neat to see, um, a lot of our community members see our facility. You know, I've got a lot of those people had never been in the middle school. That was kind of cool.
Yeah, it's, it's been, it's been very good for, for our community, and it's, it's another way that we're, we're all in this together and, you know, getting one step closer, so.
Dr. Blessing?
Well, I think we all need to give Steve a big shout out because he has orchestrated, um, he's an expert on COVID vaccination clinics and signup genius software. So, um, just amazing the amount of time he's put into that. So he, um, he has a great team, but he has also done a lot of heavy lifting. So we're very, we're very, uh, thankful for Steve, and all he's done for that. Um, also, uh, strategic planning is next Wednesday, so board members, if you're planning to attend, please let me know. Um, I've heard from Mr. Toadvine, but I'm still waiting on the rest of your RSVPs. So does that mean you're coming? Can't come?
No, I'm.
I'm sorry. I thought I did.
I was out of town.
Out of town, okay. I just won't have you on the calendar invite, so, yeah, yeah, so. Yes.
I thought I RSVP'd. I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'll add you. But yeah.
I will not be there.
Sure, sure. So then it'll be Dale and, um, Ann, correct, in attendance.
I am going to have to, I'll be there first thing in the morning, then I got to run to a closing, then I got, and I can come back. But I figure I can do virtual.
Right, we can record it as well, so it should be fine. So for those of you, we can post it later. So that's fine, okay? And then we won't actually have to do, if there's only going to be two board members in attendance, we won't have to, like, advertise for a special meeting. So that's good to know. Brenda will help. Appreciate that. So, yeah. And, and it's great to see everyone here. The cabinet is here. Our board members are here. So it's great to see all the team together in person, and thanks to our special guest, uh, Mrs. Huber back there for, this is, uh, this is history in the making. And, uh, please tell your husband thank you for his generous donation to, uh, your staff, and that's great. And he, uh, he attended, I, I stopped by the, um, the mound, um, Christmas parade and was, uh, greeted by Cindy Lou Who and, um, The Grinch. And, um, Dave made an appearance with Dunkin' Donuts and coffee. And it's, if you remember that evening, it was a blast of cold weather in December. So, um, he's a, he's a good guy to keep around. So please tell him thank you. And, uh, that's it. Like, I, I would concur, Dale. It's been a great march. Wonderful weather, wonderful weather. I'll say that again. And, um, uh, looking forward to springtime and spring sports, and all of the great activities we're actually going to be able to have coming up. So prom is scheduled, so exciting times.
That's good.
Yes. So thank you.
I will say, before we adjourn, I will say, if you will pass along, I mean, she knows, I told her the other day. Thank you, Steve, when I called you the other night at ten thirty or whenever I called you. But I do want to give a shout-out to Sally Royer. She does an amazing job throughout the year. I gave Steve a call the other night, and I have no idea what time it was, um, um, for, uh, family in Miamisburg. So again, reach out to her and tell her that I appreciate it. I got the card. I got her number now. So I won't have to go through, I'm just going to call her directly, and she gave me that permission. So, thanks.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move you adjourned.
I'll second.
Okay, first by Angel, second by Amsler. And roll call.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
This has been so much fun this evening. I hate to say yes.
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 Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Eight o'clock.
Now, do you see why I said what I said in your office that day?
Yes, sir.
Okay.